Meeting Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All council members are present except Mayor Raym, who is absent and excused. So, moving on to the meeting agenda approval, would anyone like to pull consent? Councilmember Zornz?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item AB 19-138.
Okay. Do I have to second it? Okay. Okay. Great. So, the one consent item is pulled, and we'll move on to the visitor comments. Do we have any visitors that would like to comment? Okay. Seeing none, I guess we'll move on to the AB 19-138. Councilmember Zornz?
This one was a tough one for me. The city of Bothell has come so far in its ability to communicate and work effectively for the benefit of the city and the people of Bothell and the businesses that come. Having this easement accommodate this project, which has a lot of great things going for it, I have an issue with. And I would like to propose that for the people of Bothell, that we stick to the full appraisal of the square footage that we are allowing for the life of the pop to use in the easement, which is $24.23 instead of $14.45 per square foot.
So, I was wondering if staff actually wanted to present any information? Because it's a, there's some history to it, and I thought perhaps we'd give them the opportunity to talk about the process and what happened.
Sure. I'd be happy to walk you through. Wow, it sounds really loud. So, as this project was being developed, so when we have large projects like this, the developer will come and they'll work with the long-range planning staff, and they'll look at the downtown suburbia plan and determine how best a project like this works. And Dave Boyd is here as well, so he may be able to answer some questions about that actual process. So, as that occurred, one of the real keys to the downtown in that area is Horse Creek Plaza. That's a real gem as that gets developed, and is one of the key open spaces for those apartment units down there and the ability to have some open space. And then also taking into consideration that anytime you have active use and sort of eyes on open space, that's always great for parks. It tends, when you have movement and people, less shenanigans and sort of problems happen in parks, so parks that are sort of isolated and don't have sort of movement around it, people tend to go there and do things that aren't so above bar. And so, one of the things we were looking for was movement and activity and really the use of Horse Creek Plaza. So, during the planning process, the developer was, the discussions were, how do we do that? And how do we really activate that space? And as a result of those conversations, the building was designed to come up right to the lot line. So, normally, there would be a setback. Twenty, thirty, thirty feet, I think, would be the normal setback. But there was a setback. So, there should have been a setback. It was, the building was designed to go to the lot line, and in the plans, there were notations made that an easement would be needed then, because if you go to your lot line as a property owner, and you're going to then abut whomever it is, whether it's a city's property, whether it's another private party, you would need access, you would need permission and the ability to use that parcel for your use. And so, the discussion and the notations on the plans were, an easement needs to then be negotiated to be able to do this. So, to be able to build up to the lot line, you'll need to get this easement from the city, because it's the city's property. So, that was always understood, both that the negotiations needed to happen, but basically that an easement was required to be able to build the building the way it was being proposed and designed. So, the building was built, a large portion of the building was built, and then the negotiations began. And we noted in the staff report, they began in January of this year. And so, it's, we worked towards, what is that easement worth? And understanding that it was a way to activate the park, but still using public property for basically private use. And so, we hired an appraiser. Public property, it has tremendous value to the community, but it doesn't have monetary value, because it can't be sold, it can't be built. And so, it's hard to appraise the value of a piece of property. If that piece of property were a buildable parcel, it would be worth far more than if it's a public park. So, we got an appraiser, and he came in and he appraised the property at a little over $24 a square foot. And so, we used that kind of as a baseline to say, okay, there's value in this property. We identified how much of the property they needed, what the easement would be, and then we sort of looked at that number and to be conscious of sort of the value. And we tried to the best of our ability to identify a value that we thought was reasonable, and that's where we picked up the, or identified the fourteen and change per square foot. And that's what we negotiated with Main Street Properties, along with the requirement that they put in temporary access routes for, until the park is permanently built, individuals from the building need to safely access. This is fire code, this is absolutely mandatory, they need to be able to safely evacuate, so they will put in, at their own cost, the mandatory access routes, and then the pedestrian strip to be able to not only exit the building, but be able to then safely exit from that area, and then also contribute towards the permanent enhancements in that park. So, that's the, that's the deal that we negotiated with Main Street Property Group, and that's what we've brought before you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do you want to restate what you were saying before, and then we can see how everyone else would like to weigh in?
Can I add a comment to that? Because they are using city property for their easement, I feel less badly about asking the full assessment on this, because what they got in using their own easement for their building far outweighs the cost on the easement. Does that make, does that make sense? That, that they, their building benefits by using their easement space for building instead of coming in and out of their building. So, I feel comfortable in asking that full appraisal of $24.23. And I also appreciate the, looking to keep their own people safe coming in and out of the building and require, and I'm sure that they would want that too. And I also appreciate the piece that says, this is just for the life of the building, because this is still city property. We fought very, very hard to get Horse Creek to where it was. Part of that fight was protecting it, Horse Creek, from being encroached. And so, I have no, I have no problem in asking $24.23 on, per square foot on the easement.
Would anyone else like to ask questions or weigh in? Councilmember Olson?
So, I know in the packet, it was stating that they had a deadline that they were shooting for, for certificate of occupancy. It sounds like they made some agreements with some of their tenants, that they had a certain date. What would be the impact? Or what's, what's the next steps? Can you walk us through kind of what would happen if we do amend this agreement to a higher price?
The way that I'm hearing your direction, that you're giving me a different price per square foot, I would then substitute that price in the contract and the easement and return it back to Main Street Properties at your request, and they can sign it or not. I negotiate on behalf of the city, but you are ultimately the decision makers. So, I do the best that I can, and if you're not satisfied with that, that's absolutely acceptable, and it's your ultimate decision. And so, if that's what you choose, that's what I would bring forward.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. So, I've kind of gone through here a little bit, and I did get a little bit of a briefing from, from the city manager a little earlier. I'm curious, do we have a map on this, this area that we're talking about? I know I can kind of gather from the packet where it's kind of at, but I was just wondering if there's a map. If there's not, no worries, but I would actually tend to lean towards what Councilmember Zornz is, is saying about the financial impact. And I'd be curious to know, when we, when we negotiated the, I think it's called a right-of-way use, is that correct? If, if this was a private owner to private owner, what would have happened in that situation? Right now, it's a city to private owner. What would happen if it was private to private?
I would assume both, both private owners would negotiate to their full value if it's a private property owner, and I mean, that's, that's what we tried to do. I mean, that's, we look out for the taxpayer and the citizens of Bothell, and so you negotiate to what you think is reasonable and what, what you think you can come to a deal, and I would assume it's, I can't really answer the question.
Okay. And it sounds, based on the numbers, the $14 was a, to me, it sounds like, well, obviously it's lower than the 24, so that was part of that negotiation that we were doing in good faith? But it sounds like the assessed value would have been around the $24 mark.
Correct.
Can you tell me what, is there a way to tell what that dollar amount would be?
The difference between the two?
Yeah.
Is it roughly about $50,000 more or so?
Fifty thousand.
Would come to the city, would, yes.
Would come to the city? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Well, I tend to lean more toward the staff's recommendation, and that was that they said a fair amount for the limited easement is $14.45. And I think the reason for that also is that when you talk about the $50,000, this will be a temporary improvement. They will have to return the east side of the pop building, is that correct? For city, for, they'll pay the city $50,000 to compensate the city for the anticipated future cost of the removal. So, that $50,000 will be used to remove, from what I understand, these temporary improvements in construction. Is that correct?
Right, but the temporary improvements are off the easement.
They're off easement.
No, they're on the easement? They're in the easement?
Yes, that's what I thought. So, I think in good faith, I feel as though, you know, if the staff recommended a fair amount for limited access, $14.45, I'm going to support that.
If I can add a little clarification to the discussion, the Main Street Property Group will pay at their expense the initial pathway and improvements. The $50,000 is for staff to come in at a later date, when it's appropriate, and replace the materials with the materials that are going to, that are appropriate for the entire park. This is separate from the cost of the, per square footage of the easement.
Councilmember Agnew?
I usually go with the staff's recommendation, and I'm going to continue to do that on this item.
Okay. I guess that leaves me. I, I think that, my view of what happened was, very conveniently, they expanded their building and they're making money off of it. And so, I think that it should sting, when you take something and you weren't supposed to. And so, I'll be supporting Councilmember Zornz's recommendation. Yep. Go ahead, make your motion.
Okay. I would like to move that we approve AB 138 with the following changes. Our easement agreement to construct the necessary improvements on Horse Creek Plaza, that we authorize the city manager to execute the proposed building setback easement and temporary construction and access easement in substantially the same form, but with the sale price being $24.23 per square foot.
I'll second that. So, all in favor, raise your hands, I guess. Oh, sorry. Discussion, does there any more discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will be supporting the motion. I feel like there's, the information that I've received today and kind of understanding how that this has all come about, leads me to believe that there's potentially some costs that the city's going to bear here and the community. And I think, to me, having the, the building there and the, all the wonderful things that it's going to bring to our community, I feel is fabulous, but I feel like there is a piece of this that concerns me about the right-of-way and the, and the taking of public property. And I don't want to use the word "taking" of public property, but I want to, I want to use the word "partnership." And I feel like when there's areas within our community that are once open to our community and no longer open to our community, where people are not willing or wanting to go into those areas, to me, that's an area that's lost to the community. While I, I appreciate the partnership with Main Street Properties, I feel that we owe it as obligation to our community to ensure that we're always looking out for the best interests of the community as a whole, and not one side or the other. I think that, you know, hats off to the community, the city, for coming up and bringing a negotiation to the 14, but I do believe that the difference between the 14 and the 24 being $50,000, I don't feel is, is a deal breaker for the, for the project overall, and I feel it's a good, good step forward, moving forward to giving back to the community, so.
Would anyone else like to speak? Councilmember Olson?
I agree in a similar fashion, that it's gonna, the park will be different, and this piece of the park property that has the easement on it will have a different feel, it'll have a different use than the rest of the park. So, I think it's definitely, will have a different lifetime use of the pop there. So, I, I feel that the appraiser's value of 24 is the correct value. So, I'll be supporting the motion.
So, I'll just add to that. I, I agree with what Councilmember Olson and McNeil said. I thank Councilmember Zornz for bringing it to light and making this, the whole process transparent, so that people understand what happened and why. And like I said, I, I think when something is done improperly, then there should be consequences, and so, I don't think $50,000 is a crazy amount of money. So, with that, I guess, raise your hands. Oh, you, now you want to talk?
Yes. Okay. I want my turn. So, I guess I tend to want to do the best I can to work with the people that are improving our town by bringing in good buildings and bringing in active apartments, and then this also has a little school downstairs for childcare, which is a really valid part of our downtown core. And I just feel that you have to work with people, and it looks like to me that this was negotiated, that was, staff agreed that it was of, that would have value, fair, fair amount, to, to require this building access. So, I just like to work with people who bring improvements into our town, and so that other people know that we are working with them and for them, and they'll continue to buy pieces in our city and improve our city and build here. So, I'll be, but you know.
Okay. Anyone else want to talk? All right. So, all in favor for the motion to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed building setback easement and temporary construction and access easement in substantially the same form as presented with a sale price of $24.23 per square foot? Please raise your hands. Opposed? So, motion carries with Councilmembers Olson, Zornz, McNeil, and Dewar in the affirmative, and Councilmembers McAuliffe and Agnew in the negative. Motion passes. Okay, moving on. AB 19-139, visual preference results. Director Kaderman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So, if you recall, back in April, we did what we called a visual preference survey with the council, and we had some members of the audience that also participated that evening. We compiled that information, and tonight, wanted to present you with a summary of the results. We are, despite Councilmember Zornz's request, we're not going to go through each one of these again, but I am going to highlight a few of those and reflect what, what we think we heard from the council, and we're looking for you to give us some feedback tonight to make sure that we have captured the gist of the discussion and the direction that, that we think we got from that visual preference survey. So, just a real quick reminder of, try to face two directions at the same time here. The purpose of the exercise was to gain a better understanding of what the council is looking for in terms of high-quality design. That's something we've heard consistently from the council when we talk about the gateway parcels. And by the gateway parcels, I mean parcels D and E, F, and G. Those are the main entrances into the downtown. The city-owned properties, we're going to be looking at the development of those in the near future, particularly for D. So, we want to get some good direction from the council in terms of what your expectations are of what that development would look like, and how we can create that gateway feeling. So, we looked at 53 images altogether. We put them into three categories, the first being streetscape, public spaces, art, and signage. Second being building design, that was really about the facades and the materials. And the third was about the building massing and scale. So, tonight, we're going to talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly. I tried to get the theme music, but I couldn't quite get that one, so. And I'm not going to hum it for you. So, starting with the good. So, you'll notice in the slide, what each slide will contain, this was the slide number, if you wanted to refer back to that. And then the category, this is the, what the council's ratings were. So, recall, we had, we asked you to, we gave you 10 seconds on each slide, and we asked you to rate it as a positive, a negative, or a neutral. Just your gut reaction to it, and then some of the reasons why you, you felt that way. So, in this one, the council had six positive, one neutral, and no negatives. We also captured the same results from the public, and then we summarized the comments that, that you had written down on your, your scoring sheets. So, in this one, safe, walkable, the scale, the separation setback, the landscaping, were all positives that were noted. One sort of neutral was about needing more lighting, and the public had a very similar reaction to that one. This is obviously not a gateway-type development, but it's something that could happen in that area, and we wanted to get a sense of the pedestrian scale. In this example, oh, must have gotten good again. The council, five of the council members thought this was a positive, one neutral and one negative. Again, there was positive feedback about the signage, the size, location of that, having the setback from the street, the landscape strip, and again, that safe, walkable sidewalk. Again, then the public, very similar reaction as the council, and they also mentioned the weather protection. This particular one, the reason that number is green, that's the slide number, but it's green because this is one where the public and the council maybe had a little bit different take on things. So, in this particular example, the council was a 4-1-2, the public overwhelmingly liked it. And some of the reasons were, there was agreement on some of the reasons, actually, for the positives, that it's much more of a people place, it's active, walkable, again, that word came up again and again through a lot of this. The public had similar reactions, they also liked the greenery, the outside seating, and the width of the sidewalks. It's, it's about place-making, and this is creating more of that people space. Then, when we get into building design, this one had a 6-1-0. The clock was a positive, the corner, the brick color, the window framing, the, the council reacted pretty positively, a lot of times, to corner treatment, different articulation, something that's a little more visually interesting. Also, the types of materials and other activities, particularly at the street level. And you notice this also has street-level retail. Some similar reactions from the public, but not quite as strong as a positive. They were a little more mixed on that one. In terms of building design, this is the Shag project, just a block over. This is a few months ago, before it was completed, obviously. But again, this had more of a gateway feel for the council, and you liked the corner treatment and the shops on the base level, the pedestrian level. Public, a little more mixed on it, again, sort of a little, you know, neutral, positive in the middle. The glass, the colors, the shape were all good, but they didn't feel like it was really anything special that would stand out from anywhere else. On this example, the council, again, very positive, they liked the, you liked the blend of the old and the new, the, the different facade treatments, the variable height, colors, material, sort of that timeless feel. Brick was something, again, that in most of the examples, the council liked materials like brick, stone, wood, and glass, but not too much glass. And this had, had a lot of those, a pedestrian feel as well. The public also generally positive toward it, for a lot of the same reasons. In building mass and scale, this was one the council overall liked. Interesting in terms of the, the way that it was broken up, not really much corner treatment. Again, the corner treatment seemed to be important, and not a gateway type of building. The public, little more mixed on it. Landscaping setback, didn't really feel, again, it was a good gateway example. This one, in building mass and scale, again, the council had more positive feelings toward it. The windows, the style, the proportions, and the, the public spaces that were created up above here, as well as around the street level. The public, a little more negative, they liked the first floor, but the rest of it, they didn't really feel was a good fit for Bothell. This one got a pretty good positive from the council, liked the massing of the buildings, how it was broken up into different facade types, different, different heights, variation on the roofline, that type of thing. Again, the various scales were also popular with the public, and this one sort of had the look, there was some feeling that this had a look of a possible gateway type of building. So, now, let's talk about the bad. This one's kind of, kind of interesting, because there were parts of this that the council liked and parts that, that you didn't like. You liked the color and the mural, but didn't really feel it was something that was appropriate for a street frontage, for a gateway feature along the main streets that we're talking about. So, didn't necessarily fit the, the thing that we were, we were trying to, to capture here. Also, the industrial look, that was, again, something that we heard in a few different examples. Industrial look was not something that the council was generally favorable toward, and I think that gets back to some of the materials that we talked about, the traditional northwest materials. Public wasn't too crazy about this one either, for some of the same reasons, although everybody seemed to like the colors. This particular example, there was some positive reaction to, yeah, it's a Main Street feel, that's kind of good, but that's not necessarily what we're looking for in the gateway feature. It, it looks a little dated in terms of its architecture and the style and the color and, and the activity level. So, probably not, not a good example. Similar with this one, little too modern, not very creative, flat, I think, again, sort of has that industrial look to it. There was some positives about the signage. The public, however, seemed to like this one more so as a, we're not talking about large numbers here, mind you, there's only about a half a dozen folks that were rating this one. And I did notice as we went later in the evening, we had fewer and fewer members of the public that actually participated, so. But there were some positives that the public saw in this as well, in terms of the pedestrian environment, the, the signage, and again, the canopy was something that they noted on that one. This one was universally disliked, just didn't feel like it was really the right fit for what we're trying to, trying to accomplish in the downtown. But we can, we get some feedback, we get some helpful guidance on things that the council didn't like as well. So, that's why I wanted to share some of these with you. This one, again, just didn't seem appropriate in terms of the style, the architectural style and the materials for the northwest, although some thought it was kind of interesting. And then, in building massing and scale, this one, again, very flat, very boxy, was not at all appealing, very dull and uninviting was one of the comments that we heard from the public. Now, we get to the ugly. Just when you thought it couldn't get any worse. This one's kind of interesting, because it wasn't necessarily a negative about the sign itself, just that it really wasn't appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish here. There's some nostalgia to it, it has, you know, some of that historic feel, but it just really wouldn't fit with what, what the council, I think, was looking for in that area. Dated, you know, a little too, too much signage for one thing, but it does have some nice vintage feel to it. Public really wasn't crazy about it. This streetscape, again, no positives really, it looked more like an alley, very narrow sidewalks, the split sidewalk was very confusing to people, not very attractive, the landscaping was sort of minimal, not very inviting from a pedestrian standpoint. This was unanimous. This was unanimous. Nobody liked this one. Despite the nice colors and everything, it just didn't seem to catch on. This one actually has a grocery store in the, the ground floor, and then these are apartments above. This is in Ballard.
Fremont.
Oh, Fremont, excuse me.
Does that fit Fremont?
It does fit Fremont, yes. So you can see some of the comments on that. Likewise, on this one, it was just sort of a bland design that really didn't seem to capture people's interest or imagination. Not very inviting. This one, just too boxy, a big black cube, yuck, terrible. We're actually, some quotes from the council. Really nothing interesting from the public standpoint. So that just gives you a, a sample of the different ones of the 53 that we looked at. And from that, we've pulled out some, some consistent themes that we think we heard through this, both positive and negative. Again, some that's helpful to us as we look at what our current regulations allow or require, as well as what we might work into the development agreement for the projects. So in terms of the streetscape, the, the consistent themes that we heard, something that's very safe and walkable, with good lighting, visibility, wide sidewalks, making that, that placemaking, the people place, inviting and attractive, good signage that's really scaled for the environment that, that you're creating. So if it's a more of a pedestrian scale, you don't have highway-type signage as part of that. In terms of building design, again, the materials, the wood, brick, stone, and glass were very, very favorably received. The facade should have some visual interest, framing of the windows, and maybe some of the facade itself, some good articulation. And the corner can be a focal point. Doesn't have to be rounded, that's most of the examples that we showed you, but at least something interesting on the corner, not just a plain square block on the corner. And then it's more of a traditional northwest style, nothing too trendy or industrial. In terms of building massing and scale, desirable to have it broken up more, break up the facade, use variable height, setback, roof line, maybe changing the window type, or some articulation, that type of thing. Undesirable was anything that was really looking boxy, blocky, or flat. Those are the, the negative words that we heard on a lot of the ones that were not very well-received. So what we would like to do with this information is incorporate some of this into the marketing materials that Jeanie will be working on with our broker. So we want something, language along the lines of something that complements the Main Street area, but doesn't replicate that. We're not trying to recreate Main Street out on Bothell Way or on 522. Something that's really eye-catching in terms of the gateway building and the other features, so there's more to the gateway than just the building, there are other things that can be done. That could be landscaping, it could be signage, it could be street furniture, it could be some art, or those types of things that would help to create that, that sense of a gateway and entrance into the downtown. And then really optimizing the site development potential. Getting something that is of an appropriate scale and really makes the most use of the, of the land that we have there, not something that is a one-story, or maybe a one-and-a-half story, that just doesn't really fulfill the, the potential of that site. So we've identified a few things that we would say are requirements, expectations, or desires. This could go into the development agreement. Some of these, we could already cover probably through our downtown code. And I've asked Dave Boyd to be here to help answer any questions you might have about what our code does and does not, give us the latitude to do currently. But as far as some of the requirements, we would have focal points at at least two of those corners, the southeast and northeast, so that would be the corner of Main and Bothell Way and 522 and Bothell Way. Predominantly traditional northwest materials, again, like we've talked about, building modulation, articulation, and this is in the downtown code. So we can stress that, you know, that's going to be important. The other thing that this exercise has done for us is it gives us some, some examples, some illustrations that we can share with the, the applicants and the architects to say, these are things that the council liked, this is why they liked them, these are things the council didn't like, and what they didn't like about them. So it gives them a little bit more to go on as well. It's one thing to try to describe that, it's much better if we can show them, show them pictures. In terms of some of the expectations, varying materials, colors, height, setbacks, really creating that visual interest and appropriate scale. Placemaking, again, make sure that we create spaces where we're going to be able to activate those with people. Maybe programming of some kind, or at least some, something that attracts people to those, to either sit there or socialize, but, but do something rather than just, just pass through. Also, in terms of the development review process, this would be a desirable. In our development agreements in the past, excuse me, we have, we've tried to create a separate design review process that doesn't necessarily work with our existing process. So we want to make sure that we put something in place that really creates a process that will be straightforward for the applicant and for the city, so that when we go through that, we have clear expectations of what that is, what's being reviewed, and when. So it can either be part of our development review process, and we can put some additional steps in there, but articulate those very clearly in the development agreement, or we can create a separate process. And that's, that's not something we're necessarily asking for the council's direction on today, but that is something we want to make you aware of, that we're going to be looking at that as part of the development agreement as well. And certainly incorporating art into the gateway features, that can be part of the building, it could be part of those public spaces that we're talking about. But really, to look at this in terms of the total package that we're trying to create, and understanding that it, it's a development that would be occurring first on, on Lot D, but that's also setting the tone for the other development that's going to occur on E, F, and G, and other things that we're going to be doing in downtown, particularly as the gateway and, and up Bothell Way. So with that, if you have, if there's anything that, that we've said that you disagree with, or something that we've missed, or you'd like some clarification on, you know, have we kind of hit the mark, or there are some other things that we need to, to put into this?
Who would like to go first? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to know how the public process worked. So how did you gather people? How many, you said maybe there is a small number of people? So how did that process actually develop and work out?
These were people that were actu, at, at the same council meeting. So while you were scoring them, they were also scoring them.
So there was not another public process, other than the meeting itself?
That's correct. Yeah.
Anyone else want to call, councilmembers, or?
One, I, I think you did an excellent job reflecting what I recall council's input in getting, getting a nice consensus of what we were feeling and reacting to. So, the good, the bad, and the ugly. The, the second thing is a, a question, it's just an incidental question. I was up in Burnaby, B.C. last week, and I was driving, so I couldn't take pictures. But we're, they're undergoing a lot of growth all up in that area as well. And I noticed that the buildings that were creative in how they had arches into their entryways, or windows were different shapes, really stood out as interesting, because when we got, you know, the traditional contemporary big buildings that we think of now, and those were just, you know, just next to it, it was, it was a very stark difference of what was interesting and what wasn't. So my question to you is, in our code, do we have much flexibility for creativity in window shape? You know, like a dome at the top of the window? You, you construction guys would know what you would call that, besides rectangular or square window. But do we have much flexibility for window shapes and arches and that sort of thing in our code?
I'd say the code provides pretty much infinite flexibility for, for that sort of thing. It doesn't mandate it. What it does mandate, excuse me, is a certain amount of transparency in the building facade, so a certain percentage of, of window openings to avoid the blank wall effect. And then it does also mandate a inset in the window, so there's some, some variation in the plane.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm not trying to imply that, that, that should be in there, I just thought in the creative process, would somebody have that tools? And you're, you're saying they have to meet certain light standards, window, window surface standards?
In terms of the amount of window, yeah.
Right, okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to know.
But in terms of shape, and we, we really, the code is intended to give designers quite a bit of flexibility.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Olson.
I just wanted to say thank you. I thought this was a, a good recap, and it, it feels like it captured what I remember thinking when these were up here, so. And then I like how you really summarized it in just a few bullet points, so it's, it's not a onerous list, or, you know, just a lot of stipulations for them. And it still gives them our desires, but not a lot of, you know, doesn't handcuff them when they're working for the development proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I like what you did. You did a great job compiling all that data. I, I was surprised that there weren't a few New Orleans-style balconies out there that we could visualize, but I think, I think you've done a fine job. I would have liked to seen more interaction with the citizens, if, if at all possible, but apparently that wasn't the case. That's okay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would echo Councilmember Agnew's comments. The process, for me, was amazing to go through that process and to be able to pick and, and just get a good sense and feel for what things are going to look like in the future, going through that process and ensuring that developers that are going to come into our community understand not only what the council wants, but what the community wants. So hopefully, there'll be opport, more opportunity for the community to, to be involved and engaged in. But at least, we should be thankful that we had the opportunity, and they had the opportunity to be engaged in that process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say, I thought it was a really fun and efficient way of getting to the root of maybe what we all envisioned. A picture's worth a thousand words. I think it would have been hard for us to, to come to any conclusion just talking about it, but the pictures made it really real and gave us something to react to. I'm curious, you had mentioned that Mr. Boyd could talk about what's already covered in the plan and what's not, maybe give us a little more insight into what we might need to change, or how we already are addressing things that we're interested in, in the current plan.
I guess I would say that we didn't identify any necessary changes. The code already has requirements for building articulation, both vertically and horizontally, for high-quality building design. So I don't think any code changes, any, any things that you would like to require beyond what the code requires could go into the development agreement. And we'll, we'll be looking at some of those, perhaps a little more, more specific direction on materials, for example.
I, yeah, I guess when I think about things that are important, do we have requirements for how much brick and how much stone or that sort of thing? Because it seemed like that was something that we were all really interested in. And I, forgive me, I'm not really aware of how, how much the regulations are in terms of requiring those kinds of materials.
There aren't any requirements for the percentage or the amount of brick, that they're just listed as among the, the preferred materials, or the required materials for, for building bases, and then preferred materials for building facade treatments. So, again, that's something that could be incorporated into a development agreement as a, you know, further specific, more specific requirement than the code provides.
Okay, because I know we, I think a lot of us expressed interest in having the gateway project be of higher quality than we might see in the rest of downtown. And so, I guess I was trying to get at how, how do we do that? And it sounds like it's through the development agreement.
I, I think that's going to be our best instrument at this point, particularly given the timeframe that we're looking at.
Can you remind us what the timeframe is?
I believe this is going to market next month.
October 1st.
Wow. Oh, I'm so excited.
So I just wanted to add to you, to your desire for something that is high-quality and stands out from the rest of downtown, is the feedback that I'm getting back from our brokers, that this is a highly, highly desirable and exciting piece of property, and that their marketing efforts will go out beyond local and region. It's going to go out to a bigger market, and he fully anticipates that we're going to get some very, very interesting and quality offers.
Ask one more question, because we brought it up before, it, it wasn't addressed here, but we had talked about the potential of upzoning it, an additional floor or whatever. At what point would we have that discussion? I think we had talked about it was six, and we were, think some of us thought maybe seven, depending, or if we're doing affordable housing. Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, that was something that we've broached with the council in the past. You know, would, would that be something that you would entertain if, for example, we could get a, a higher-quality development or affordable housing as part of that? So that was, that is something, I think, that would come through the process. We would make the, the proposers aware of that. And then if it's something that they wanted to do, excuse me, then we would come to the council. That would take a code change and possibly a, an amendment to our programmatic EIS for the downtown, because I don't think we considered that additional height. But there, there's still an opportunity to do that, I think, is the short answer to your question.
I just wanted to address the public process part. So unlike other properties that have been sold in the past, we intend for this process to be very public and open. And so we're working with a broker now to, to figure out what that's going to look like. But in the past, a piece of property was sold or negotiated, and then the contract came to council and sort of take it or leave it, and the community wasn't engaged in that. And we intend to have a process that, there's an opportunity to look at either all the proposals, or maybe the top proposals, and, and again, have the community be a part of that discussion. And a study session really is a, a very appropriate place for the community to come and, and participate in the process. So there's still many more steps to go, and that'll be open and transparent, and where we engage the community.
Thanks, that's really helpful.
And I, I would also just add, excuse me, add to that. In terms of the development agreement, so that will also come to the council for your approval. So that, you'll get a chance to see, and that's as part in, in public meetings as well, so the public can see that. But that's where we'll spell out some of these things in more detail. I don't know how detailed it will get at this point, that's something that we'll work through as, as we're working with the broker and, and looking at the different proposals. So the, the materials, for example, we may have a percentage, a minimum percentage, or we may have something that says it needs to be predominantly these types of materials, and then kind of leave it up to them to, to show us what they're proposing, and then we can review that and see if that's something we think is consistent with where the council wants to go with it. So that's all more detail that'll come through that process.
Thanks. Did anyone else want to go a second round? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that we can engage the community as we move forward step by step into this, developing what is going to be presented to us from builders. And they're, and I think that it's important that while we do it at a public meeting, I think it would be good if we could also put outreach to the community, so that they know that there is opportunity for them to be involved, and for them to be able to say, have a say in it. Because I, I would say, and I think because you did say there were 12 people at that meeting that night, it's, we need a larger voice from the community. That's my feeling.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Go ahead, once? Okay, moving on. Last chance. Draft, Draft Vision 2050, AB 19-140.
Me again.
You again.
No music with this one either, I'm sorry. So for this one, I've plagiarized heavily from a PowerPoint presentation that Puget Sound Regional Council uses in their briefings, but I've also winnowed it down. So this evening, we are asking the council for some direction. There is a draft letter in your packet. This would be a comment letter on the, the draft plan itself. As you may recall, the council submitted a, a comment letter previously on the draft supplemental EIS that was issued earlier this year. So the, the draft plan is now out, the comment period runs through September 16th. So we wanted to get your feedback this evening on the draft letter that we put before you, so that we can finalize that and get that to PSRC in time for their, their deadline. So the draft plan, just a little bit about the region, we're currently at 4 million people. I think most people are familiar with the four-county region that, that we are a part of, over 80 cities and towns, a mix of urban and rural, and a large urban growth area. Some of the main tenets of Vision 2050 that are really a carryforward from Vision 2040, this is an update to Vision 2040. It's not a wholesale rewrite, it's really building a lot on what was done in the Vision 2040 plan that was adopted in 2008. But the strong economy and healthy environment, preservation of the, the water farms, recreation, the urban growth area, this still is the urban growth area, this still is a transit-focused growth. That was one of the alternatives that was looked at in the draft supplemental EIS. That is the general direction that this is going with some modifications requested by three of the four counties. And then the local actions. So there are a lot more actions associated with this particular draft plan, many of which are local and a lot of them are also for the Puget Sound Regional Council to carry out. Why are we doing this plan? Because we're adding 1.8 million more people is the forecast to this region between now and 2050. That's population increase. In addition, we would also be adding approximately 1.2 million more jobs to the region. And I think I mentioned this in the previous briefing on this. The 1.8 million people is the equivalent of 40 cities the size of Bothell. So that's a lot of people to add in the next 30 years. And we're changing as a people. We're getting older, more diverse, and we're living with fewer people in our households. So this is pretty much the national trend and we're seeing that at the region as well. So in terms of the regional growth strategy, it's really focusing on cities and centers. So the geographic, just lost the term that Puget Sound Regional Council uses for their regional growth strategy. They have different types of cities that are categorized. So there are metropolitan cities, those are the five largest, Seattle, Bellevue, Bremerton, Tacoma, and... No, that's not in our region. Everett, thank you. Yes, there's one in each, at least one in each county. And then the next level are core cities. And those are cities that have a regional growth center. Bothell is a core city because we have the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. Those groups are expected to take the largest amount of the growth for the region over the next 30 years. What they've added to this plan, that's one of those dramatic differences from Vision 2040, is what they're calling high-transit capacity, high-capacity transit communities, or HCT communities. And those are areas that they could be within cities, it could be core cities, it could be other cities. But that's where we're going to have the main transit focus. And that could be light rail, bus rapid transit, ferry service, or commuter rail. And again, Bothell would fall into that category as well. So that's another category they've added that's sort of in between some of those others. That's really to leverage the investment that we're seeing in the region in transit. So some of the main areas in terms of policy that are in the Vision 2050 draft have to do with housing, affordable housing, obviously a huge issue in the region. That's, there's quite a bit in terms of the policy and the actions. Providing opportunities, this is economic opportunity. It's also looking at racial and social equity. And the racial and social equity is incorporated into all of the different elements of the plan. There's not a separate element or policy section on that. It's really integrated throughout. Focusing the growth in the cities and centers. So you can see the goal is for 65% of the population and 75% of the job growth to be in those centers or near high-capacity transit. So those are those HCT communities and the regional growth centers that we've talked about. One of the reasons we do that is to preserve the open space in the farmlands and the natural resource areas that we have in the rest of the region. Mobility is an important part of the plan as well. And that's one of the areas where Puget Sound Regional Council really has some ability to influence the growth that's occurring in the region because they provide, they're the pass-through agency for a lot of the federal funding for transportation projects in this region. And then, of course, protecting the environment. And this is talking about not only water quality, but also climate change and air quality and everything that goes along with that. And then there's a new section added on collaboration and supporting local actions. So that's really PSRC providing more technical support, both at the local level and being more supportive of local needs in Olympia. One area, for example, being on annexation statutes and looking at how those can be changed to create, facilitate annexation by cities. We are a subset of several groups of policies that all work together for us under the Growth Management Act. So you start with the Growth Management Act and then you go to the multi-county planning policies that are part of Vision. Then you get to the countywide planning policies and we have two sets of those. We have to work with Snoomish and King County. So they don't always necessarily agree, but in theory at least they're consistent with the higher-ups, the multi-county and the Growth Management Act. And then we have our local comprehensive plan, the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. So all of those work together in concert. The 60-day comment period, as I mentioned, ends on the 16th of September. We have, the Growth Management Policy Board will then make a recommendation on a preferred alternative that will go to the executive board. They will follow that recommendation. Then they'll do the final supplemental EIS and the General Assembly will vote on the final plan in May of next year. And then we'll have a couple of years to get our plan consistent with that. So just a reminder, some of the previous comments that we made in the draft supplemental EIS comment letter, supporting the transit-focused growth alternative and really looking at the timing of service to growth because not all of the high-capacity transit service will arrive within the planning horizon that we're currently operating under. Some areas will not see that until the 2030s or 2040s, which will be much later in the plan horizon. Really maintaining that urban growth area, that that's something that's been very important to Bothell. And as you recall, Snoomish County is currently studying the southwest urban growth area and whether that should be expanded. Maintaining local control over accommodating targets. The targets come down from Office of Financial Management through the counties and then they're allocated to the cities. But the cities, under the Growth Management Act, are really the ones that determine how best to accommodate that growth within our jurisdiction. We want to make sure that that is maintained through this process. Encouraging more of the jobs-housing balance. That's done with some shifting of some of the jobs that were going to King County. Those have been shifted to the other three counties, a small percentage of that to help with that balance. And then increasing the allocation of moderate-density housing overall. This is something that we noted in the draft supplemental EIS, that it really didn't seem to address that missing middle in terms of affordable housing. And conversations I've had with PSRC staff, they said the reason for that is that the local plans currently don't provide capacity for that. I think our plan does. That's something obviously we'll look at when we do, when we update our plan. But that's why, as a region, they're really not incorporating as much of that as we've really, as we've talked about on a regional basis for more affordable housing. So in the draft letter that's in your packet, some of the highlights of that, again, supporting the transit-focused growth and prioritizing cities and centers as places where that needs to occur. Maintaining local flexibility and how to accommodate that growth, like we were just talking about. So maintaining the UGA and reemphasizing one of the basic tenets of GMA, that cities are the providers of urban services, not the counties, not special districts necessarily, but cities. The racial and social equity, again, that's incorporated throughout the plan. And that's something that we want to see supported going forward. One of the things that, one of the actions that they have in the plan is that they would develop a tool that jurisdiction could use as we do our planning to make sure that we are incorporating racial and social equity throughout our policies, looking at it through that lens and making sure that we're engaging all the different communities that don't typically get involved in our planning efforts. And then affordable housing, of course. There again, they'd be providing additional technical support and tools and providing support at the legislature to help us get additional funding for that. So I'll come back to that. The other draft letter that you have in your packet is a draft from King County that they're asking Suburban, sorry, Sound Cities Association to approve, and I believe that's going to be at the PIC meeting tomorrow, where they're going to be discussing that and whether the SCA would sign on to that letter as well. If not, King County would go forward with it on their own. But the draft letter is in your packet as well. And this highlights some of the themes from that particular letter. So again, the transit-focused growth, very similar to what we've talked about. Racial and social equity, they're proposing some additional policies and actions. Housing, proposing more detailed policies and actions on that with more of a focus on low and very low income and eliminating the racial disproportionality that we see currently in the cost burden of housing. On an environmental side, setting some goals for reducing greenhouse gases, looking more at resilience planning for hazard mitigation, more open space protection. And then, excuse me, finding more tools to address local funding needs, including for schools, not just for local government, but also schools. And then looking at the fiscal impacts of annexations on cities and counties. And again, PSRC has said in one of their actions, they would be more supportive of changes to state annexation laws to facilitate annexation or incorporation. So... The two things that we're asking for direction from the council this evening, one is on the draft letter from Bothell. If there are particular changes or things that are missing or you want to see clarified or revised in the draft letter. And then also, if you want to, we can talk about the King County SCA letter and provide some direction. I don't know if the city wants to weigh in on that at the PIC meeting tomorrow, but that's another opportunity for the council to provide some direction on that if you want to. So with that, happy to take questions and direction.
Thank you. Who would like to ask questions first? Councilmember Olson.
So the, so we've been speaking about this in Snoomish County tomorrow, off and on for the past few months.
Yes.
And I know some of the, you know, some of the rural cities, smaller, that are out there, you know, away from the high-capacity transit lines, that aren't getting as much growth, say, as all the cities on the high-capacity lines, are, you know, looking for more flexibility and maybe changing or spreading out their urban growth areas. And I think some of our comments, when we've had discussions, was we, as Bothell, you know, really need to keep our focus on the growth in our city and our future annexation areas, especially with our growth center areas up in Canyon Park and just because we don't want to endanger that and we have some pretty lofty targets to hit. So I guess my question is, is... Really, the comments in the letter, I didn't quite see it that we were, what our position on having that local flexibility in that growth and kind of what your thoughts are on having that flexibility or, you know, how rigid should those urban growth boundaries be?
So there is some language in there about local flexibility. I believe it's under the Managing Growth section. And it references the draft Multi-MPP, the policy, RGS 3. Provide flexibility in establishing and modifying countywide growth targets. Provided growth targets support the regional growth strategy. That's a proposed policy in the draft plan. And I think that the language that we have is supporting that flexibility in accommodating growth, leaving it up to the local jurisdiction to decide how best to do that. In terms of expanding the UGA, the city's comments in the past have been about not expanding the UGA for a lot of the reasons that you cited. It really starts to dilute what we're trying to accomplish and then you start to lose the preservation of the open space and the farmland and the resource areas as well. For the smaller cities, one of the things that Snoomish County requested and PSRC included in the draft plan was a shifting of some of the allocation, if you will. It's not a growth target per se, but the allocation of growth to the rural and the municipal unincorporated growth area. So our MOOGA, our annexation area. They shifted from the high-capacity transit communities, a certain percentage, to those other two areas. So that was to, I think, to give them some additional growth to accommodate. But there's nothing in there that I'm aware of as far as supporting an expansion of the UGA.
So it definitely sounds like it's a challenging task to expand it. And I think we even, in Snoomish County, had it come up last year where they were trying to expand it and it died pretty early in the process. So it seemed like there is the flexibility, but it's not an easy process anyway. So there was a little bit back and forth as, you know, some of these rural cities were like, we need this flexibility, and then other people would say, well, you can have it, but, you know, good luck. It's not really that easy to get it through. So, and it's with our local control, it's not going to be forced on us. So, because it is our local control. So it sounds like it's really going in the right direction.
So there are different ways for the flexibility to work. And you're correct, to expand the UGA is not an easy process and it's designed that way. And that's under the Growth Management Act. And the countywide planning policies, I believe that's true in Snoomish County, I know it is in King County, are fairly restrictive in terms of what it takes to expand the UGA. And for all the reasons that we've talked about. The flexibility really comes in how we accommodate those targets within our existing jurisdiction. So every city can decide on its own if it wants to focus that in a certain area or spread it out more, you know, around the entire city or create a few different areas, different types of housing, different types of densities that you can, that you can accomplish within that. But that's really what the Growth Management Act is getting at, is maximize the use of the land that you have first and demonstrate that you really can't reasonably accommodate more. Then you can look at expanding the UGA. It also relates to service, you know, the infrastructure services. So do you have the capacity in terms of your water, sewer, storm, roadways and those types of things to serve a larger area? I don't know if that helps at all, because I know it's an ongoing discussion and it has been for the 30 years that GMA has been in existence.
Oh, yeah. I definitely agree with that, because, yeah, it definitely always seems to just be cyclical in these conversations and topics just seem to kind of percolate and bubble up again.
I will add, it is up to the counties to expand the UGA.
Okay. So in the, in the presentation, there you're saying some additional tools for, you know, school funding and just additional tools for, you know, more flexibility on funding and going after different funds. It sounded like this came up also in our discussions. If we're using our current tools enough? And if, you know, that, the state legislature, you know, thinks we're using the current tools enough? Because it seems like there was a couple of people that gave feedback that's saying, legislature is saying that you're not using all the tools you have anyways. Why do you need more tools? You should use the ones that you have, you know. Do you think we're using our tools in Bothell to the full capacity? Or do you think we have?
Well, I can't speak to all the tools, all the financial tools. Chris is not here. But I can speak to the affordable housing, for example. That's one where we do have a limited number of tools available to us as a local jurisdiction. And I think that we are using, we're using a lot of those tools. There are more that we could use and we're actually working on that, the MFTE being one of them. So I think that it really varies by jurisdiction. There are some cities that I think, like Bothell, that are really working hard to use all those tools to the best that we can. But I think there are other jurisdictions that may shy away from using some of those tools for different reasons.
All right. Thank you very much.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. It's, it was a complicated question, so I wasn't looking for a silver bullet there. Just more of the discussion of it.
Anyone else? Since mine kind of seg, my comments kind of segue, I'll go. You update us on where the Snoomish County study of expanding the UGA is and where we are in that process?
So there was a workshop, it was this summer, I want to say it was back in July. I did not attend that, but Bruce went to that. And I think they were sharing some of the results of the study that they had done. Then the general feeling of the audience or the tenor of the audience was not favorable toward expansion of the UGA. And I should say, the county has been very clear through the process that this is not a, this is not a proposal to expand the UGA. They're simply studying what that could mean. Obviously, that could lead to some sort of a proposal to expand the UGA. I think that the next step is, I'm not sure if it's going to the... I think that the next step is, I'm, I'm not sure if it's going to the Snohomish County tomorrow committee for a report or any feedback, but I think it's going to the county council later this year. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not up to date on.
No, it's okay. I just, I didn't know, didn't know if the rest of council was aware that that was going on. And so I thought it was a good opportunity to let them know. Also, so, since I started, I think this is a, a great presentation. And I think for people who want to know why we're growing and why we have to keep accepting growth, this is a great primer on why, because 1.8 million people is a lot of people for four counties. And I, I wondered, do we yet know what the magnitude of order of the growth that we're going to need to accept is?
For Bothell specifically? Not yet.
Not yet.
The Office of Financial Management produces their forecasts. And they have, I think their next one comes out. I want to say next year. I'm not positive about that, but there, there's a number that they come up with. They, they come up with a forecast for each of the counties in the state. And then the counties work with all of the cities within the county to basically allocate that growth to become those targets. The, the state numbers are only for population. PSRC actually comes up with employment figures that then get allocated the same way. So what I've heard from both Snohomish and King Counties is that we will be doing that process starting in 2020. So we'll be sitting down with the county and all the other cities in each of those counties and talking about what is the amount of growth that the county is going to be getting? And how do we allocate that? So the, the reason that the Vision 2050 is so important is that is a guide that we use to help allocate that. So that we're going to look at putting more of that growth into the metropolitan cities, the core cities, those high-capacity transit communities. And there's a certain percentage that, excuse me, in the draft plan, that again is a guide. That's not a requirement for us necessarily to follow those exactly. So the short answer to your question is no, we don't have the number yet, but we will have it next year, because that will be the basis for our comp plan update.
But we know with 405 BRT and 522 BRT, that we are prime for transit-focused growth, right?
Yes, and the fact that we're a core city with an urban growth center.
Yeah.
A regional growth center, excuse me.
It was really interesting at the PSRC annual assembly, they had Lego city and buildings were representing the different cities. And they had, the blue was current population and the red were stacked with proposed new. There was a lot more red than blue.
Yes.
Just to give people, I wish I had a, a photograph. It was fascinating. Who wants to go next? Oh, sorry. Councilmember McAuliffe.
That's right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So would you go back to one of the very first slides? Sorry about that, but there was something that caught my eye way back.
Way back. Oops. I went too far back.
It was when they were talking about the population and the growth.
The upcoming growth?
Yes.
That one.
Okay, um, I can't see it. Okay, that's not the one, but what it did say, and what I saw was, 81% of the growth will be people of color.
Oh, that's that one.
There it is.
Yes.
So what, okay, so that it will be, will become more diverse. And that's pretty startling when you see 81%. That's a pretty large number. So as I was looking through what Bothell has sent us in their letter and what I saw in the King County draft, I was a little bit more drawn toward, on page two of the King County draft, when they talk about, so when they talk about social and racial equity. There was more language there that I liked and thought that we might want to improve on ours a little. Because when I look at our social and racial equity, it, it's so broad. And I thought theirs was more distinct. And I also appreciated that, you know, they kind of talked about engaging these communities. So they have, their voices heard in the plan, in the plan of growth. So if I would do that, if I was going to suggest a change.
Okay. Is that in the, in which part of the King County letter?
It's on page two.
Right, but is it in the narrative or is it in the additional policy proposals?
It's in the narrative.
Okay.
But I just felt what we had was somewhat light.
Okay.
Compared to, you know, the language they used, it was more distinct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had a question around the growth, the designations and things like that, as far as getting funding. Is there any coalition between the two, like if we, if our targets are higher, if we have growth centers, more funding is available to us? How does all that come into play?
So the, the scoring changes every round, but typically what has, what has happened in the, in the last several rounds is that regional growth centers like Canyon Park score more points. They, you get points for having that regional growth center. So if a project is within or serving that regional growth center or connecting regional growth centers, then that, that particular project would, would get additional points for that.
Ranks higher and helps bring more dollars back into the community?
Yes.
Okay. Fabulous. And Councilmember McAuliffe brought up this slide. I found that also interesting, 2000 to 2016, 81% of the region's population's growth. I go to the first point there, which is 18% of the region's population will be over the age of 65, which is 14% higher than today. Which means that I believe we're going to have to really be working hard on affordable housing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zornz.
Meandering questions here. I'm apologizing now. The first letter that went out in April, there's a comment about the, the split that our city has between King and Snohomish County, which I always appreciate when that's being brought up. Are we finding that we're being given some flexibility between how we take growth? Or is it still being hard-nosed, the Snohomish will take this much and King County will take this much?
So. Trying to come up with the best way to answer that question. I have not found anyone who can really answer that question for me, in terms of how much flexibility do we have? I know that from the state standpoint, those numbers go specifically to those counties. When I have had the conversation with PSRC and with some folks from each of the counties and just the preliminary conversations with the state, I haven't gotten a definitive answer that we can't do that.
Okay.
So we're still looking into it.
Okay. All right. Good. It's good answers you can give for the situation.
It's the best I have right now. I'm sorry.
Kind of reminds me of, and this is an aside, in photography, they say, go ahead and take the pictures and ask for permission later. It's kind of reminds me a little bit of that. And I do, you know, I love it anytime we talk about the forgotten middle. I appreciate the nod to the forgotten middle. I have a, a couple of just clarifying curiosity questions for the letter that's going to Councilmember Mello. And it's toward the end, there's a, because I have not had my hands on this document, the four-part greenhouse gas strategy. Has anybody looked at that?
I've looked at it very briefly, just to know what the four parts are.
Okay.
They're talking about four dis, four different types of actions that can help to reduce the greenhouse gases. One has to do with like user fees, another is land use, another is transportation. And the fourth, I think, has to do with building construction.
Okay. And it has some flexibility between those elements? I'm just thinking, this is a vision for 2050, correct? And science can change a lot, and how you can impact, you know, those variables may change if you're talking about transportation versus construction and that sort of thing. That goes as we know more. That was just a question that I had on that. And then the, towards the second to the last page, open space policy. Encourage acceleration of open space protection and creation by local governments, prioritizing areas with higher racial and social inequities in light of rapid growth expected in the region. So is that advocating for more open space where there's areas that are more diverse? It's page five of the letter. It's the second to the last bullet point.
Yes, I believe that's what that's talking about. I, I think it's, it's, it's really addressing two issues. One is making sure that we're providing open space and in areas that currently don't have that. So those are typically areas that are underserved, lower income, racial minorities, because there's not been the investment in those areas. So I think that's part of it. And the other is to, is to acquire those properties before they're developed and lost.
Okay. I, I, it made a lot of sense for, you know, the component of not having it. That's one piece of it. And then where you have a lot of diversity, having areas where people can congregate and mix, it's, is a, is a plus for a very varied community. So thank you for the clarification.
Is that something you were looking to add to the, this is the King County letter. I didn't know if you were.
No, no, I just was, had a question mark above my head, because I was a little befuddled. So, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Nice presentation. I agreed with Councilmember McAuliffe and the changes that she'd like made to the, the letter. That's a lot of people we're going to be having. That's a lot of people. And, and I've sat through two annexation claims up in Snohomish County that went poorly. And I don't know how we're going to make this without an annexation to meet our goals. So is the state going to give us different avenues that we can approach for that?
So two things about that. One is, one of the actions in the, in the draft plan is specifically about looking at state statute regarding annexation and creating better avenues for cities to annex and for areas to incorporate. Because that's what the Growth Management Act actually calls for. Keep in mind that areas that we would annex would not address our targets directly, because those areas come with their own targets. That would, however, give us more flexibility in terms of where that growth might occur.
And I would mention that the Recalls House report, which was, I don't know, the legislature started. Just the, their recommendations came out, and one of, they have many recommendations, but one of them is to make annexation, the route to annexation easier. So I know that that's something that'll come up this session or future sessions.
Yes.
Anyone else have other comments? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So now I'm looking at the King County action plan and what they have requested. Do we have a Snohomish County?
There was not one that was released. There was an earlier draft that I saw, but not one that I had for the packet. And I, I believe they're still working on that. I don't know if there's been a new draft that's come out or when that's coming to the, the committee for approval.
Well, I think it would just be interesting that if we could at one point in time just compare, kind of see the differences.
And, and I'd be happy to, when those are all done, I'd be happy to share those with the council as well. I will tell you, from my read of the earlier draft that I saw, there were a lot of similar themes to what's in the draft letter for Bothell that we've presented this evening, as well as the King County letter. I think Snohomish County was more focused on that local flexibility, particularly at the county level. But a lot of the same issues in terms of annexation, you know, being supportive of easier annexation, providing more opportunities for affordable housing, racial and social equity. So a lot of the same themes. And the, the discussions that I've been involved in at the regional level, the, the tenor of the conversation has really been very positive and supportive of the draft plan. I haven't heard a whole lot of, of major concerns about what's in the draft plan. There were some, some requests, as I mentioned, from Pierce, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties to shift some of the, the, where the growth was allocated in terms of, of the, the regional plan. But other than that, I think generally, there's been pretty good support for it.
And I, I'd just like to see the narrative as well. You know, that's kind of what I like, appreciate reading. Thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else have additional comments?
Okay.
Moving on.
So if I could just recap very quickly, just to make sure I understand the direction that, that I've heard from the council this evening. Really, the only addition that I've heard was Councilmember McAuliffe's suggestion to add some, some language from the King County draft regarding racial and social equity to the city's letter. So I can expand on what we have in, in the draft letter for Bothell, and I'll use some of the, the King County language. Yes, okay.
Great. Thanks for the addition.
We will ask the mayor to sign that. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to council conversations. I don't know if they have any topics that they'd like to discuss. And then, I mean, I don't, I, I just realized this was a study session, and I've been running it like a council meetings, so I'm sorry. Too strict. No coun, no coun, no council conversation topics? Oh, here we go. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So as far as the pick meeting tomorrow and going to pick and giving our stance on the draft 2050 vision, will we have something that, should I present the, the draft version? Or what should I, what comments should I make? I guess I'm, I'm asking council if there's anything that I should say or not say, or. I have the, my marching orders on the other stuff that we talked about last week at council, but I'm just wondering if there's anything I should say or not say at the pick tomorrow.
I think that the letters, the draft letter from the city, as well as the one from the county, are, are very similar in terms of, of the tone and the direction. So I'm, I don't see any conflicts between the two.
Okay.
Just from my read of them.
Okay. Fabulous. I will have a couple of things here in a minute, but I'm just gonna.
I'm gonna save them for later. Councilmember Zornz, you had something, right? Or did I imagine that? Oh, you pointed, and I thought. He was anticipating. Councilmember McAuliffe, come on. You don't have anything.
Well, I'm not gonna pass up the opportunity to tell you that Bothell Friday Market is down to three more markets on Friday nights. And so we'll go all the way through September 27th. And we're getting better and better and learning more and more, and we hope to be downtown Bothell next year.
Sounds good. Keep going.
So I, I do believe, yes, thank you. Councilmember Agnew brought this to my attention, but I do believe that you've all received from the city manager, is that correct? The youth council kind of report that was done by Max, is that right? Matthew, yeah. And it's an excellent report, gives you a good viewpoint of trying to decide how the youth council could actually work if you want to have, you know, the guidelines and the policies that you might develop from that. There is an opportunity. As we transition from our, into a new judge, we also have the opportunity to marry the youth court and the youth council together. And I guess my final comment would be, we desperately need to do something for youth. In our town, the only recreation they have is what Councilmember McNeil always talks about, is the sports. Not all kids can participate in sports. We do wine walks, we do beer festivals, we do dog parks. Come on, everybody. We need to do something for our youth.
Oh, there's a segue for my idea. I ran this past our city manager too. As an idea to whet your appetites for, although our young folks can come up with great ideas, they don't need this old person. But I thought it would be fun. Because I know our museum and historical people have talked about doing a living kind of, you know, how in, like for when women got their right to vote, they just put on something where the women were dressed in the traditional clothing of the time. And, and on Christmas, they always have the tea, wearing their old clothes. And so they have talked about in the past of having. And so they have talked about in the past of having something up at the pioneer cemeteries where someone is dressed like Dr. Chase or one of the Beardsleys or one of the Bothells. And just having this kind of living museum where you could walk through the cemetery and talk about, you know, people could visit and talk with David Bothell about what time was like and that sort of thing. And so I toss this out to Councilmember McAuliffe that maybe our high schoolers and middle schoolers would enjoy taking on that role, learning some history about, about Bothell and the process around Halloween time, and then do a zombie walk. You know, like into downtown or onto campus. But anyway, that's the extent of my ideas of events, but I, I think they could, there's so much that they could come up with that, you know, they can generate themselves and we can just give them room to, the window to do it.
I was going to say, from our first meeting with the kids on the youth council, one of the things that they asked for was a boba tea place, and I noticed that's coming. Yeah, down at the old Starbucks, right? And then I'll just go back to, hopefully in the pros plan, we'll have a skate park in there. And no, my kids don't skate. But that is the one council meeting where I believe we had the most youth attend. And we had quite a few, but just begging for a skate park. So I, I think that's something that hopefully we can, we can put in our pros plan and accomplish.
And I, and I really appreciate that. I think that, you know, we need to do lots of different things for youth and that they'll come up with the best ideas of all. But I, I, I love your idea, Councilwoman Zorn, and, and also yours. And I think that what they want, and what you'll see, and you saw it the first meeting that we had with the kids, is they want to have a voice so that they can say, this is what we really need for our youth in Bothell. And that's what they want.
Yeah, I think they, they just wanted places to hang out. And they said that they spent a lot of time in other cities, right? We don't have a beach. So that's a, I mean, my kids spend a lot of time in the beach, so we have to find some alternative to that. But it, it sounds like they just want places to go and to hang out.
And even movie theaters, you know, maybe if McMinimans would, would do something more toward youth sometimes instead of just like, you know, family, but something that the young people would like, that'd be a great place for them as well. If you give them a voice, they'll let us know.
Every Tuesday night, there's a visitor comment section, we just need to. Well, that's the only way to know what they want, right? And, and believe me, it made an impression because I'm still talking about skate parks like two years later. Yeah, they should. It's good exposure for them and for us. Yeah, Councilmember McNeil, I know you have more items.
I just have one item that I've been thinking about for a long time. And it stems around the, the Wayne Park or what we're going to name it in the future. But it, it's around a sense of community, getting community together. Last year, I had the opportunity to attend the event at Safeco Field. Now, I think it's T-Mobile Park. And it was the holiday event where the Christmas, all the lighting was happening out there at Safeco Field. And I thought it'd be kind of cool to maybe have a competition or something down at Wayne. And maybe, I don't know how it would look, but if, if it's all volunteer-based, people could set up little displays with lights, with LEDs or something like that. It might be cool to have a little Christmas lighting ceremony or something down there, competition and get a sense of community kind of come out. Might be a great way to get community engagement. Kids can get out and participate, maybe have a little scavenger hunt or something like that down there and just have some fun. I gotta, I gotta tell you, every weekend, rain or shine, that park has more people than I've ever seen before. And this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go mountain biking with my kids at the park. And lo and behold, I ran into our former assistant city manager walking in that park. So super, super cool, just to see all the people out using that park. So it's amazing opportunity, hopefully we can find fun, cool things to do. I, I heard that, what was it, the Whale Scouts or something were out there most recently doing some, some work out there at Wayne. So it's just a great opportunity for sense of community and get people together. So I look forward to doing, you know, maybe it's not lighting, maybe it's just something else. But finding opportunities like that to get the sense of community and getting people together would be fun.
I don't want to add to the city's work, but that sounds super fun. Because we've, for many years, went to the Bellevue Lights at the Botanical Garden. And my kids just, well, and I did too, I loved it. I can imagine even, or maybe we could have, I don't know, different groups decorate different areas or some, I don't know, have a competition.
Before you get too excited.
Darn, I knew it was coming, that's why.
In September, you're going to make me be the Grinch. That's passive use only. And so.
And put lights?
It, it has to be passive, so there's no programming. It can't be used for any kind of programming. That's the challenge, that's the, the opportunity to purchase and have those, those acreage for us to, to, to hold in perpetuity was for passive use only.
Okay, a different park, just, just find a different park.
Well, you know, I, I do want to interject that Bothell Friday Market is going to meet and talk about in October about a Christmas in Bothell. Because with Country Village gone, we've now lost all of the, you know, the celebrations of Christmas. And so we're trying to figure out where and what we could all do.
I just thought of a great idea. Reindeer in the dog park. It's not active use. And, and Nick did say that it was, what, what was the word he used? Farm-grade fencing. All right, before we get too silly, does anyone else have something else to say? All right, entertain a motion. Motion made to adjourn by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Councilmember Olson. All in favor, raise your hands. Oh, Councilmember McNeil in the negative, okay, unanimous. Have a great week, everybody.